Thanks, staff. Next item is the study session, which is the Flatiron Project at 3645 San Pablo Avenue. Do you need a few minutes to set up while people run? No. Maru, you're ready to go? Okay.
This is a proposal for the formerly Jug Legger site at the southwest corner of Adeline, MacArthur, and San Pablo Avenue. It's a small site, about forty-three hundred square feet. It's right here.
Can we adjust the focus on that? We're not quite there. I don't think that's you. Do you adjust the focus, Maru? Supposed to do it automatically, isn't it? For some reason, the overhead focus is way off. We're getting closer.
Is that better?
Little bit.
A little bit.
So this might have much better graphics. So this is the site. It's currently, it's vacant. The Jug Legger building was demolished about a year ago. And it's about forty-three hundred square feet parcel. And the proposal is to build a thirty-foot, thirty-feet-high building, a retail building, and it's about five thousand square feet in size. It's primarily a single-story building with a portion, about two thousand square feet of mezzanine level. There'll be three parking spaces. In terms of use, it's being proposed as a retail building. At this point, they have, they're anticipating a bicycle shop to go, but that can change. It is in the CG, or the General Commercial District, where retail is allowed by rights, so no use permit would be needed. However, if the change is, if there's a different use for the site, such as bars, or health clubs, or banks, which are all allowed in the CG zone, but they would require a use permit at that time. The building height, thirty feet, is within the forty-feet, the prescribed, forty-feet height district, and so it would not also need a use permit for the height. In terms of setbacks, the CG zone does not require any setbacks, and no setbacks are also proposed. In terms of flow area, it is within the zero-point-seven of FAR district, and the proposed flow area is one-point-two-two, so it is greater than what is allowed in this zone. About twenty-five percent more, and would therefore require a general plan amendment. It should be noted, however, that our general plan states that all new development shall be developed at an intensity that, in general, does not exceed the intensities prescribed in the map, so it sort of gives a little bit of a flexibility there. In terms of parking, the proposal triggers about twelve parking space requirement. They're proposing three, and therefore it would require parking variance. Staff believes that such a variance can be justified in lieu of the size and the shape of the parcel. In terms of design, the building has a flat roof, has vertical storefront windows, large storefront windows. There's inverted building walls at the, at that corner, sort of creating a small little plaza. The walls will be sheathed with lap siding material made of fiber reinforced cement. And the storefront windows will be stained, will be stained wood. There'll be canopies, overhang canopies, which would be metal. Staff believes that, you know, the building is well-designed, but it doesn't, it's not the most exciting design, particularly for the site, which we feel that is entry to the city at that site. And it's perhaps, it also does not take advantage of the flat iron shape of the site. So that's where we would leave it. We don't have specific suggestions at this point, and I believe the drawings are also at a very preliminary stage. Sudhish has a little bit more detail in his presentation, but with that, I have no further comments. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Yes. This is supposed to be a retail building, I presume. Generally speaking, any retailer needs parking. And the three parking places look as if they were designed for employees, because they require somebody to back into them. And a double volume, a thirty-foot-high space, is pretty dramatic. I mean, was this designed for a specific use in mind? I mean, normal retailing spaces don't have thirty-foot-high ceilings. I just can't quite figure out what the intent of this is.
My understanding is that they have a bicycle shop in mind, and I don't know what this, maybe that.
I bicycle, and I've been to an awful lot of shops. I've never seen one with a thirty-foot-high ceiling inside.
Well, this would have a mezzanine in part of it.
Part of it. But again, people, particularly with bicycles, generally bring them in their cars, because they leave them and then go on. At least, that's what I do. And again, you'd have to park on the street.
That's correct. I think Miro mentioned this will require a parking variance.
So, I mean, therefore, is it economically viable to even have it? Is this a redevelopment agency project which is subsidized, or?
It is a redevelopment agency project. I'm not sure about the level of subsidy here.
And here's Michelle.
Here I am again. Yes, it is a redevelopment agency project. The agency is currently the owner of the project. It is, there's no level of subsidy associated at this point. Essentially, what's happening now is they're coming to you with their preliminary plan in a study session. And we're going to bring the same plan to the City Council, September 5th, for their consideration and to discuss the potential subsidy. They're actually working with two potential commercial users. The general height and volume of the space is, because it's a very small site, but it has, it's at an important intersection. The agency was seeking a design that was, that was, that had a visual impact and took advantage of this, this location, which is, sort of lends itself to the taller, the taller building.
Well, I don't object to the appearance of the building at all. I just wonder about its viability.
It's, it also, retail spaces generally have higher floor-to-ceiling heights than residential.
But not thirty feet.
Well, it has, it has a mezzanine in it.
In about a quarter of it, yeah.
Right, right. So it has sort of a grander entry portion, and then the back portion has a mezzanine, so it's.
You could get three times the amount of parking in there, if you made the ground floor predominantly parking and made the retail on the second floor. I mean, there's a lot of ways that I think it could be a more viable site. I mean, if you're just selling it to somebody and not subsidizing it, that's something else, but that doesn't appear to be what this is at this point.
Generally speaking, ground floor is more valuable retail space than second-floor space. So the maximization of ground-floor space has higher value than, than doing second-floor space, from an economic viability perspective. More parking is always desirable, but in an urban infill location, most users that are going into those types of locations understand that smaller urban sites often don't have onsite parking.
But this is not in the, what you would call, the affluent part of Emeryville. Therefore, it's not, you know, going to attract retailers that are going to be generating a lot of revenue, I would think. So as a consequence, it's a, kind of a marginal project. Just my opinion.
I'd love to have a bike shop there. But is there, I don't see any street parking on the plan, but I assume this is pretty much all-street parking along Adeline and San Pablo. Is there ample parking there?
Adeline looks like it has block parking.
It looks like they have bulb out for landscaping.
Maybe we should let Sudhish do his presentation. I think that may answer some of the questions. Michelle, I mean, if you want to elaborate.
Thanks, Charlie.
The one thing that I wanted to say was, there is on-street parking available on San Pablo Avenue and along, and along Adeline at this time.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Rickard, and we're very excited about this project. For a lot of reasons. It's a great site. It's got a very interesting shape. It's a triangle, and it's very visible on two very ma, major streets, San Pablo and Adeline. And there's a lot of traffic there. So a business that occupies that building will have a lot of free advertising just from its location. And while that location right now may not be the retail center of Emeryville, it's certainly not, part of the reason that it's a redevelopment project is so that it can be a catalyst for development in that area. Staff, and Sudhish, and I, and other members of the team have spent a lot of time on this project, looking at different alternative ways of configuring a building on the site, and different alternative uses. And we arrived at this because it balances issues of parking, and use, and cost, in a way that's most successful, the most successful alternative that we could find. Having a retail use there is important for bringing a connection between the street and the occupants of the building, and to improving that star intersection. And as many of you are aware, Sudhish has been working on this, this site and its context, and trying to create a, a much more friendly pedestrian environment and bicycle environment at this location. So this building is, is designed with a sense of that context. It's not designed just for that one site, that one property. It's designed to help catalyze and improve that neighborhood. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sudhish.
Good evening. Sudhish Mahindra, STFM Design Studio. As Stuart said, this is, I've been involved with master planning this, what we're calling the star intersection. Essentially, it's, it starts from the, let's say, the Avalon Building on the north end, encompasses Maz Auto, and then crosses MacArthur, MacArthur, and over to the other side with Golden Gate Keys site, which is, which is this one right there, and of course, this site. And I'm, I'm aware right now, there's a number of changes happening here. There's obviously a, something that you all know, there's a new building that we, we got approval from you all here, a residential building with reach in the ground floor. There is discussion about a residential with some reach in the ground floor in this complex. The laundry site here, sorry, here, here. And so, one of the, one of the goals of developing a plan for this area is to connect the north side to the south side. And there are pockets of street-level pedestrian activity. The Sins Restaurant here, there are pockets of it already there, so it's, it's sort of adding the pieces and making it kind of knit together. And I think from that standpoint, the, it's, we really have to think in terms of a continuous sort of fabric of storefronts. And we did look at, a reference was made earlier about parking. We did look at alternatives where we could have more parking on the site. Let's say towards the back here, we could drive in one direction and go out the other direction, having a smaller retail space here. The problem, I think, on balance with all those schemes is that we then perpetuate what is a, not a very friendly situation on the street that exists right now, because we, by putting parking, we are isolating, again, this building from its neighbors. So what we want to do is connect all of these areas. And as far as, we did look at in the star intersection, which I will go to this now.
Sudhish, excuse me. Can you use the cursor on the computer to point, because it doesn't, the laser pointer doesn't show on TV or on these screens.
It's a mobile phone, a mobile microphone on the right side there.
So when we looked at this star intersection, several objectives. One, to make this more pedestrian-friendly, and by that, I mean, something that is not so out of scale that people feel like it's going to take forever to go from one side to the other side. Adding crosswalks that don't exist right now. Sort of, so you use a simple word, greening the area. There's a lot of wasted asphalt space, and so providing shade, and much more definition. And developing healthy sort of relationship between pedestrians and automobiles. Now, one other objective has been, which is to have parking in areas that are close to this intersection, so that people could come, park there, and then shop nearby. First element of that actually, master plan, we've kind of already implemented. I lost my cursor. So if you look at this, the, one of the first areas, there's just outside this map here, which is on Adeline Street about a year ago or so, we've added diagonal parking spaces that has given a boost to the, the retail spaces on, in the Avalon Building. And the other element that is not implemented yet is the one on the east side. We have a pocket there that could easily accommodate several cars. And the third alternative location, in addition, is parking along Adeline Street, which, again, you're not able to see it here, but we are looking at in the master plan to, because the traffic on Adeline is, is, volume is less than its current capacity, we're thinking about redesigning the street section so that there would be diagonal parking. It's just that it won't be able to happen right at the intersection, because there are a number of turning movements, but it'll happen just south of that, of this area. In addition, in front of the Springs Building, there is a area which is very underutilized here, which is where my cursor is, and we're showing some parking pockets there. So that's our, our objectives. Coming back to this building, the, the building occupies the entire footprint. We've designed it, the, the back-end parking idea really came, came, came up in, in our discussions, and I think, to be fair to this, back-end parking idea, it really is seen in the context of how Adeline Street is being redesigned. And I think it's not fair to judge it right now, so I, I just want to leave it at that, because that's really a result of that. The premise essentially being that it's a safer way for, for pedestrians and motorists to interact, because when, when you are backing in the space, you're in the mode of being in the traffic, and you're always watching out for people, as opposed to going head-in, and then when you're coming out of the building, you're just, your eyes are adjusted to your building, you, you don't have, your mind's not oriented towards pedestrians and sidewalks and so on, and you could easily back out onto, onto a pedestrian. So that's the idea, and I think to, to large extent, that's, what we have done is minimized, I'm not sure why I'm losing, is to minimize the frontage that is devoted to parking. So on San Pablo, we have absolutely no frontage that's devoted to parking, and on Adeline, a majority of it is also not devoted to parking. What you're seeing essentially is a, a building that is taller in about half the area, and has two levels here. The building is not going to be, the, the thirty feet is sort of approximate to the top of the parapet. I think by the time we have roof and so on, it's not, it's more like twenty-five-foot-high space, which is only a little higher than a lot of retailers prefer nowadays, and we think that, that that's a, that's a good height and scale for this building. The, the corner treatment is somewhat unique, and I, before I describe that to you, I'm going to show you two corners that are very close to actually this intersection. I think one works and one doesn't work, and this is not stylistic at all. This is simply, the Avalon corner, just from a urban design standpoint, I think, even though it is visible from a great distance, when you get there, there, there is really no activity at that corner. And, and on the other hand, this building here, I don't know the name of it, but it's on, it's off Adeline, and it has a very simple, age-old way of, the way corner buildings, I think, should be. I'm not, I'm not talking about the use or, or the style of the building, I'm simply saying it's a, it's something that welcomes you from a distance. You can tell, there's an entrance right off the corner. So that's the.
That's Thirty-Ninth and Adeline, thirty-nine hundred.
Losing one of my, okay, there we go. I think I, so the order got shifted somehow, but it's on Thirty-Ninth and, and Adeline. So now, turning back to what we have, what we're proposing is, is essentially a building which has a negative corner. It kind of opens, opens up. So it has two corners, creating a sort of odd space, you can say, which we hope that is, is perfect for this odd-shaped site, in a way. You will be able to come out of this, of the building out here, depending on the use, that could be used as sort of casual seating, or simply an entrance, and perhaps a place where people can go out, and as sort of a very small entry, I wouldn't even call this a plaza, but just a vestibule open to the sky area, and that's what you're seeing here. The, the bicycle is that, because we are talking to, one of the uses could be that, but it doesn't have to be, obviously, a bicycle, but it's a sort of a symbol of, of what's inside. And, and I think, in terms of, because the building is primarily one-story, or one-and-a-half story, it's, but occupies a very prominent location, the approach we have taken is a very rhythmic building that has a very strong rhythm and strong presence, a sort of disciplined kind of module.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm, I'm going to recuse myself, because the property you just showed, the acupressure, my company owns that property, or we're about to show.
And that's within five hundred feet of this site.
Correct.
So Mr. Flores has a potential conflict of interest here.
I didn't realize it until just now, but that's okay.
So in terms of, I think, in our design, again, we are focusing more on what the building offers to people as they come close to the building. From a distance, driving by, it will certainly catch people's eye as a very strong rhythm, but when they come close, some other elements will get revealed to them. First of all, we intend all of the windows, all of the storefronts, which, by the way, are designed so that they are six feet wide, so that the flexibility is there, any one of these could be an entrance, a double doors. So it's a very flexible building, depending on the uses and how many entrances you may want. And the, and they'll be made of Meranti wood, which is, there's an insert we have, we've recently done a building, it's sustainably harvested hardwood, it's, it can withstand sort of the tougher environment, the weather and so on, but it'll have a rich sort of wood appearance all around. In addition to that, the, the, all of the openings are going to have an overhang that you see here, which is, again, is a strong rhythm, so every window's going to have an overhang. And our concept there is the overhang will be a perforated material, very much like the two examples I'm showing in, in here. One is a gate at the Museum of Modern Art in San Francisco, and the other is in Southern California, which is a enclosure for a outdoor courtyard for a restaurant. What is interesting about both these cases, and I've, I've observed in both of these places, is that when the sun, when the sun shines in the day, you see the shadows of, of those elements cast on the floor. So here, we're thinking that that's, these overhangs could be, could be designed by an artist, so that as you're walking by on San Pablo, you'll have these shadows, and there's, there's a three, six, nine windows, so there'll be nine of, nine shadows there. And also at the triangular corner, that there would be, and there could even be a panel, depending on the use of the, of, of the building, that could even be customized. So it, it's, we want this to be something that's very open to the, to the sidewalk, to the public, hold the edge, but certainly does not try to dominate this, this huge intersection, which I don't think a one- or two-story building could ever really do. So I'll stop with that. I'll, happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think it's a, a very handsome building, and I think it does meet your goal of establishing a monument on this corner. I just question the economic viability of a retail space in that location and that shape. Redevelopment Agency has funded some projects on San Pablo, west side of San Pablo, north of Park Avenue, where they subsidize the rents for tenants. There is adequate parking there, and yet they still come and go, and that's probably closer to the center of things than this is. And while I'd love to see something like this, I don't know if it really makes sense. We have a lot of retail spaces that go into the base of, of apartment buildings along San, or condominiums along San Pablo, that have a great deal of difficulty renting up. And, you know, I, I don't know if it's a parking issue, it certainly isn't on the ones north of Park Avenue, but any rate, you know, as a piece of sculpture, I think it's very The question is, what do you do with it when it's done?
So is your suggestion to try to include residential on top of this small parcel?
No, I, I just think that, you know, that it should be designed around some viable use, and not just as a piece of sculpture. Because it is a handsome building, I think. And I think it's been very nicely done in the corner, and the overhangs, and color, and all of it. But I just don't know if it works.
Can you speak to the future tenancy and your concerns about financial fee? Obviously, you're not entering into something that isn't supportable, I would trust. Maybe you can speak to that concern.
Well, I, you mentioned.
Well, I, you mentioned retail spaces that haven't done well on San Pablo. And, and I think sometimes the problem there is the use. If a use is a pedestrian-oriented use in an area that doesn't have good pedestrian traffic, it'll suffer. If the use is a destination use on a highly recognizable street, in an area where there's maybe a gap in the market for that product, I think it's a different story. And I think there are successful businesses on San Pablo, small businesses. So I think it's a matter of finding the right use for the site. And that's not easy. It's been something we've worked on for a long time. But I'm quite confident that we'll be able to overcome that.
Let me add, I'll also share the fact that this is unlike the, some of the other projects, that the goal is that this will be owner-occupied. So this is not something that you're just renting. Am I, am I correct?
Potentially, yes. Obviously, there's, there's a financial deal that needs to be struck with the city council. And that's at a different level. We're here today to talk about use and design, but. Are, you had a comment, question?
Yeah, I had, I had several comments. I went to look at the site. And in spite of the fact that it may be a nice building, I don't think it's an outstanding building. As a matter of fact, the design you have on the site, the picture you have on the site, is a substantially better building than this one with that five-story circular tower. I think that would really make a significant statement in that area. And I'm a little bit disappointed that that was left out, even before you negotiated the cost with the redevelopment agency. For example, the city is thinking of putting in clocks. That would be a great place to put in a clock tower at the entrance of the city. And I think that would substantially improve your design. In terms of use, I believe it's a mistake. The retail, I, I'm in the, I'm in the real estate business, so I have some knowledge where I'm not in the design business. The retail, the, the concentration of, of retail ends north of MacArthur. And all, and goes all up. You, you're, you have a gap of almost a hundred or two-hundred feet, and then you're picking up retail again. That's not normally the way you develop a retail area. It's not contiguous to any other retail use. On the other hand, if you look at the block itself, the block itself is predominantly residential at one end. Artists and art, artistically oriented use. I think this would be a great place for, for, for lofts, for live-work spaces. Where I think it would not only enhance the area, it might solve your financial and parking problems. And I, I understand that loft space or is permissible in the, in the commercial zone, isn't it? That, that would be a permissible use.
Uh, live-work, live-work would, would be allowed with a conditional use permit.
Yeah. I, 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 my own feeling is I think you missed the mark, I'm, I'm sorry to say.
You know, if I could point out to the planning commission, this is, your role is simply design review for, on the architectural. So, and issues as to use and potential users are not within the authority of this body. So we real, even though the agency owns the land, the, it is really, you need to treat this developer like any other applicant. It, with regards to design review. And you'd really be overstepping if it were just your average applicant, though.
Well, I guess my only comment in that regard then. And speaking as an architect, I, I think that there should be adequate parking for retail.
I'm not bothered by the lack of parking because it is such an odd site. And I think that there is opportunity for a lot of street parking in underused areas now. And that the street parking can be increased. And I, I also think it's much more important to have a real good street wall that encloses that intersection at least a little bit, because it's a big, vast, unfriendly intersection. And for that reason alone, I would, I would encourage that the building be even higher. Do something that will help to scale that sea of asphalt that's there. I'm glad to see that you've got some planting considered in the overall master plan area to try to soften that intersection, because it's a hard, dirty-looking place right now. So I would, I would also agree with Art that there's opportunities here to make more of a statement and make more of an impression when you're coming into Emeryville in this, at this intersection. And I would hope that you'd take more advantage of that location.
I would agree with that. I think we need, we need an entry gateway statement building there. And I also don't have the concerns about parking. I think that, as staff had pointed out, you know, it's on a major transit corridor. And we're trying to get people out of their cars. I think the idea of, I know we're getting a little bit saturated with lofts in Emeryville, but some sort of a residential, live-work kind of concept would be good. And I would not want to see any parking that's visible particularly along San Pablo Street to accommodate that. So that's gonna be the challenge. If you go residential, how would you accommodate, you know, parking? And maybe this is, we've had some previous discussions, and we will be having a study session next month on creative approaches to parking and whether we bundle parking or unbundle parking. And I would consider that as you're going through this design process. But taller and definitely an architectural statement is warranted at this intersection.
I do appreciate you're trying to warm up the facades along there with the use of the wood. I think that's a nice thing, because that is a really cold area visually.
I, I think the site is so small, but that's the biggest challenge of all. You know, I, I agree, a monument would be ideal on this site. But to make it five stories would just aggravate the issues of parking, I would think. Although it would look handsome.
The canopies on San Pablo, are those within the property line?
Uh, no.
Then you're dealing with Caltrans?
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to let you know.
Yes.
I don't have any problem with the lack of parking. I was just thinking that there'd be a nice, if this is a bicycle shop, there'd be a nice bike shuttle van in there that would go pick up bicycles.
Good point.
I see. I missed that meeting.
And they get a discount if they bring in two bikes.
Right, there you go, do a little plan. They have to kill it first.
Other than, I, I think I'll let the architects speak to the design. And I'll just continue speaking to the sellability of it. Where's, where'd Carol go?
Oh, she's over there.
We're not, we're not supposed to talk about that.
Well, we can talk about it, but.
One other comment, sort of, I, I like the design and I like the verticality of it. But if, if we were to go taller, I, I think we would need to look at a different window configuration where we have, you know, broken up with mullions or something to, because with large window expanses, you know, with a, maybe a three or five-story building, it, it would be a bit much.
I see that, yeah, I mean, this is a really challenging site, and you've tried to address those challenges. I have to agree that I think a parking variance is appropriate for this use, whatever goes in here. I think there are risks and challenges that anybody wishing to occupy this, whether it's a retail condo arrangement or private ownership, would have to accept the neighborhood, the configuration, the limited location. Design review-wise, it's kind of interesting how instead of emphasizing the, the flat iron, you've gone the opposite direction. And I'm not sure how functional that door space is gonna be in its current dimension. Is your idea that the whole wall would open inward? I can't, I don't understand that.
No, I think the idea is that in the plan, if.
Looks like it slides into it.
There, there's slide, there are two sliding doors in, in this area, in this area, that they would slide.
Do you have to pull it inward as you're standing outside the door? Or no, they?
Like, I mean, these are not meant to be entry doors. The entry doors will be somewhere else. But this is really to be operated by the, the tenant during good weather.
Oh, okay.
Either they'll go away and disappear up. They could be rolled down. There's one, the, the closest thing I can think of is, there's, there's a store on Gilman and Seventh or Ninth, where the Smith and Hocken, that whole complex.
Yeah.
There's a store, ethnic art store, that has these two doors that are at, at a corner. And the business generally opens them up during the day. But you could just close them. There's no mullion there. When they open, it becomes a bigger opening. So it's that sort of fun element, but it's not really meant to be the main entrance, walking in from the street.
I'm just thinking about how important and prominent that corner is. And I understand Gail's point as well about, you know, how do you balance height and the challenge of additional parking and the functional use of such a challenged space? You're dealing with a triangle, which presents challenges just for operation. It almost, I almost feel like your building is, you know, solid enough without doing something fancy at the corner and allowing that right-of-way to become a public art location, a very vertical public art location, which becomes the focus, rather than the building or the, the apex of the triangle. You know, a large, vertical standalone sculpture. We saw some interesting sculptures in the competition for the Greenway installation. And if you gave it enough breathing room, that could really become an interesting focus. There's a sculpture on the opposite, the west side of Adeline. It's not very visible. It may have been constructed by the current occupant of that spring building. It's kind of, it's, it's a subtle piece, but that might be a way to deal with the corner and the, the, the lack of focus that you have in your building right now. Your deliberate reverse of that focus to put something outright in the public right-of-way there. You obviously have enough space to accomplish that there, especially if you're, if you're providing that landscaping around the perimeter. I'm a little concerned about the awnings, especially during winter. Usually your, an awning functions to provide some protection. I'm not sure your shadow, the shadow would play on the building, but it would be a very short period where the shadow's gonna play on the sidewalk. And a lot of times what happens when you have that type of open awning, it becomes a place where the water actually concentrates and you end up getting dripped on. And people end up trying to avoid that. So whatever you do with those awnings, it has to be designed in a way where it doesn't become a bigger problem. The, the design, the richness of that facade, I'm a little concerned that the material you intend to use there isn't gonna work. You're using, you know, the fiberglass lapboard. And I guess your idea is to paint it really richly?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that is the idea.
I don't know. It's a, you know, I just don't want the whole thing to look cheap and worn out in five years.
Right. I, I, I completely share your sentiment. We don't want this to look cheap. I just wanted to add that I didn't mention that the, we do plan to have the base of the building to certain distance.
Right.
So that even carts, you know, made, a base will be poured in place, colored concrete. So that even if you were, you had a cart and you just pushed it against the building, it would not make contact with the cement boards.
Right. And interior, the, it hasn't been programmed out at all at this point. You know, it's whatever you can pull in as a, as an occupant, whether it's one or three or five, your space would be subdivided to accommodate the use that comes in there? Is that correct? Okay. And you've had serious discussion with one interested party in particular that wants to hang a bicycle in front of the building?
I think, I think more than one. You wanna talk about maybe the other u- use, potential use?
Well, I think the, the space is open for tenant improvements. And I think as a retail space, it's best to have the sales area out towards the corner where it's most visible and where it has that volume of space. And then the services that would serve that retail space would tend to be towards the south end of the site and the solid wall. I guess my point in that regard is, as whimsical as the bicycle suspended there at that corner is, if there were a public art piece, you know, there's, there's gonna be a competition. And it'd look, I think eventually look pretty cluttered. I don't, I could see that being suspended along one of the street facades. But to put it at that corner, which is so important, just seems like it could be better used, you know?
I, I think you're right. If, if there's, if it as signage is the attraction and the interest at that corner, it needs to be very special signage.
Right.
And if there is something else there, then the signage is signage. And it doesn't have to be the attraction getter.
Say anything about maybe other possible retail uses?
Well, I think the, the building is a, is designed to be flexible as much as it can be given its shape. I'm actually, I'd like to respond to some of the better questions.
No, you may. And one of the things that Charlie and I have been discussing is that with the need for the variance on the site, that when it does come before you for design review, we're gonna have to look at what uses are permitted as of right. And in the context of that variance, there's gonna have to be some limitations because not every use would be appropriate, given the parking limitations. So certainly that will have to be better defined for you when it comes up for actual approval. And I'm sure, not every use is permitted by right on San Pablo Avenue would be appropriate for this site.
But even though retail is a permitted use, and there are other permitted uses here, with a variance, it may be limited to just retail. Because the variance might only be for retail and may not be for other uses, if you follow.
Is there any possibility of the redevelopment agency acquiring the next parcel down? So a larger project could go in there that might work?
I don't think at this point that that's on the, on the.
Or is the city limit very close there?
Um, I don't know where the city limit is with regards to, but this property was acquired with the money mart, and that was the package that was presented to the developer. Yeah.
So Carol, what you're saying is we can speak to the use? That's what I, that's what I think you said.
I think it was within.
That's what she's trying to tell you.
I, I'm not completely backtracking. I think in terms of, you know, that this is design review. But in the context of approving that variance, you are gonna have to look at, at those windows of uses. So if I was too harsh, I apologize. And yes, go forward.
So we've tried, we've really tried in creating this design to see things from your point of view. And we have spent a long time and, and looked at many, many alternatives for the site to try to come up with this one that we think is optimal. And some of the, the trade-offs that exist are, if you go to a residential use, presumably at an upper floor, you have to park that. And that takes away, or maybe you don't even have to park that, but you need to have some sort of service core that goes up. And it takes away from the retail. and it takes away from the retail area. And we're of the opinion that in the long term, this area will be a vibrant place that pedestrians go to, and that a pioneering retail use, that's a destination use, can help catalyze that. And we found that putting residential above takes away from that future. It, and it's also, it's sort of a small site to do that on, because it's only 4,000 square feet. So, if you do, you don't get very many units per floor, so you're doing a very, very small project, and it, and it's, it's expensive to do, so we thought the city was getting the most bang for the buck out of this design.
If, if I can address, some of you have mentioned the, the preference for more of an iconic statement at the corner, and, and you were referring to, I think, one of the drawings that's on the site that we had done many years ago. And I, I think, only thing I want to say to that is that a, it, again, our feeling is, just like you've said, when you do something like that at a prominent intersection, it has to be done well. And so, in order to do it well, it's, it's, as it is, this building is, is, is a 300-plus-dollar-square-foot building. When you talk about, and, and we certainly wouldn't want to downgrade any of the other parts of the building. So, now, if the building has to financially also carry this iconic element, which could add another 20, $30 a square foot, $150,000 is, is really not a lot of money to have a iconic statement, a tower element, something that's well-designed. So, I, I, I think that's certainly possible, but this, that's the discussion I think, you know, perhaps we'll have at the city council in terms of how much subsidy in the building. And alternatively, some of you have mentioned that it could be that the iconic element is the public art element. So, we're open to all of that, we're not, we're not saying that a strong symbol at the corner isn't desirable, because after all, we, we actually had come earlier with that proposal. But what we're saying is really that to do it well, to do it well, what, what, would cost, and I don't think we want to do it, anything other than do it well.
Well, there's 30 feet from the edge of the building to the corner, there's plenty of space.
Yes.
In the public right-of-way to put a tower.
Right, we could have a real statement there.
But the, you know, I think the building personally, speaking as an architect, is a handsome building, and I think you've done a nice job within the constraints. I just question.
Right.
The economic viability of it.
And your sense that Art's suggestion of a live-work option, especially if this goes to condos, where somebody is willing to go in and pioneer in this neighborhood, they'd have a place to live upstairs, they could have a stairway that drops down to the retail, or their workshop, or whatever, and they could still have the parking variance and have three parking spaces or four parking spaces. You don't think that that's financially viable?
No, it's not that at all. We're concerned that live-work often is live and curtains, and no real vitality at the street. That was, that was why we made that decision. But we.
There's a, there's no reason that a live-work space couldn't be used for retail, is there?
No.
I'm just trying to build in as much flexibility as possible.
I think, well, we generally refer to that as flex space, it's space that can be used for just about anything.
The uses on Christie Street, is it called Christie Commons?
Yes.
Where you have stores down and, and a condo above. That's the kind of thing I thought I had in mind, where you'd have a lot of, and if you're going to sell them, I think you'd do better financially with that approach. The other thing I was thinking is, getting to Jim's idea, if you stay with this building, what would be wrong with truncating the building rather than having this reverse and making the building just a little shorter by about 10 feet or so, and maybe just having a glass panel, which would then make that triangular area much more substantial?
I thought you weren't an architect.
I'm not.
Everybody likes.
Someone told me you may not be able, you may not be able to create good design, but you know it when you see it.
Considering the question on live-work, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance in the live-work section that says that in a non-residential district, which this is, any live-work building may be converted to wholly non-residential uses which are permitted in that district. So, if you had a live-work space, it could be used entirely for retail, if you wanted to.
It's just that retail, it, it, there's more retail space in Emeryville right now than is being used. There's a lot of vacant storefronts, and we're just adding more, and we're not providing any more amenity.
Well, someone said that the ideal tenant for this would be an owner-user, and that's the whole idea of live-work, you're selling the, the thing to someone who will live and use the space, which is a little different than the other retails that we're developing along San Pablo.
But, but almost all the live-work space in Emeryville, as someone else said, is just curtains.
They will.
You know, that's what it really is, it's nothing you can look in and see anybody even working in.
I thought that Art's idea of truncating the building in the front was an interesting one, because it would, I believe the San Pablo sidewalk is also all under Caltrans jurisdiction, and getting public art on that might be a challenging thing as well. So, having a space that's within the property line where there could be something done, whether it's a piece of art or a, you know, or whatever, that, that seems like a better possibility at the moment. But that's, it's something to look into.
You could also put a tower just on the front corner there, too.
Clock tower.
That'd get Art's clock in.
Any other comments, we, we obviously haven't given consistent direction here, but.
No, I.
What else is new?
I think you've given us good direction.
But I just want to make sure I understand with our comments about bringing the building up, making it more of a physical statement, I'm hearing that that's probably not feasible, that you've considered all these different options, and it's something that, I mean, can it be pursued or not? I'd like to understand now whether we come back with a, you know, one-story or 30, 30-foot-high ceiling building, or we're going to look at multiple stories.
Well, could, could we have just say a Campanile-like tower at this front corner?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just would like to know.
Not unusable, but.
I think it was helpful, since we didn't have that background information with our packet, that, that there has been a, a history here, and you've gone through many, many iterations on this challenging site, so that was very helpful. But I do think at a minimum, we need some sort of a tower obelisk, whatever, in the front.
That's not out of the question, by any means.
Well, back to the tower thing, since we've brought up twice, you know, one thing I cannot stand is something that is fake.
Right.
You know, we see the quote "tower" at the Andante Building, which is this dead, useless space. Even the treatment that Cava did on the Adeline Building, it's, it doesn't, I don't, I'd rather see nothing in your approach to do the opposite than to see something that is insincere on that corner and is functionless, so I will be very vocal if we end up with something that's just this big fake tower, because we need to have a tower on a corner.
It could have a clock on it, I mean.
Something, yeah.
Right.
Does the, does the floor area ratio, does that, is that restricting your ability to design the taller building? Because you're already over the floor area ratio?
I don't think it is on the residential side, because residential, those rules don't apply.
Yeah, floor area ratio doesn't apply to residential, and also if it's not occupiable space, like a clock tower, for example, that would not count in the FAR.
I think what's, what's, what was really stopping us from pursuing that and is, is simply what Stuart said, this is such a, it's an odd shape, small site. When you start putting residential, the issue of parking comes up, it's one thing to have retail without parking, it's another thing, is the city going to allow residents to sort of find parking at night and then go up? That's one, the other is, when you have residential, you need two stairs coming down, and you have, so you start, all of this starts filling up the space, and, and makes it for a very expensive loft, which is fine if this was Nob Hill, this triangular site, I think we could make the numbers work, because those lofts will sell for a million-plus with lots of windows. But when we are competing here in the marketplace, Emeryville of efficiency lofts, this is anything but efficient.
I, I would like to go against the majority of my colleagues in, in promoting residential, and I, I think that if you built residential on that site, with, you would need to have parking. I don't think you'd sell condos there, or even rent, without parking, and you would take up so much of your own, so much of your space.
Right.
And it would be a fortress.
Mm-hmm.
It would have to be a fortress for people to live there, because of the neighborhood right now. So, I, I'm just not in agreement with the majority of the.
Well, I don't, I don't think the shape would accommodate residential anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Paul makes a good point.
I think he does.
We should probably point out that the same applicant is building a 36-unit residential project right across the street on the opposite corner.
But it's a shape there that's more suitable to it, I assume.
Any other comments before we wrap up this study session item?
Well, I generally just like to summarize it, I got the sense that with the design that was presented this evening, that we generally liked the design, including the window treatment, and that if it is not going to either work out, you know, financially and just programmatic-wise to increase the number of stories, then some type of an iconic artwork, clock tower at the, the corner there that could provide that height and create that, that sense of gateway entry, I believe, is something that the commission would like to see. But I think the design is wonderful, I would definitely concur with Buzz's comments, I think it's a beautiful design.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with this site.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
It sure is.
Commissioners' comments, any comments from commissioners?
I think we've made them all.
I, I would just like to thank everybody for appointing me to the planning commission.
Welcome, Art.
I, I hope you will be able to put up with me, I'll try to behave myself. And I'm looking forward to a lot of interesting meetings.
Thanks, Art.
Welcome.
No other comments?
The meeting is adjourned.
Glad we got out of here by now.